We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, October the 4th, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
If you will, please let's stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by an invocation from our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, from the endless bounty of your love for your creation, you provide all that we need. As your people, we confess our trust in you, believing that you care for our welfare. In God we trust, we proclaim on our currency, yet the people of this county also put their trust in these elected commissioners. We trust that they will do your will and provide justice to ensure a quality of life that you provide. Protect these honorable commissioners, give them your wisdom so that their decisions may reflect your desire for your people. Give them a quiet assurance and guide them in the difficult times. May your will be reflected through them and may your people be blessed by their leadership. Amen.
We welcome all those that are in attendance here in person this evening. I would ask that if you have your cellphones with you, if you would, please make sure that they are on vibrate so they would not disrupt this meeting. We thank you for that. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, are there any agenda items that you'd like to add or any you desire not to discuss this evening?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Before we get into the, um, our meeting tonight, Commissioners, I'd like to begin with a chairman's privilege, if I may. I know I speak on behalf of this Board of Commissioners in saying that our hearts are heavy as we remember the horrific event that occurred Friday evening, the shooting of a Craven County law enforcement officer. Law enforcement takes our officers into dangers every day, and we are living in an era like none other where crimes of all natures have put law enforcement officers in the line of fire. These men and women meet danger head-on, and their dedication to duty and their heroism deserves our utmost appreciation. This Board of Commissioners tonight would like to acknowledge the heroism of all Craven County law enforcement and especially to those who serve in law enforcement under the umbrella of Craven County government. We say thank you for keeping us safe each and every day. I also want to acknowledge and express the appreciation of this Board of Commissioners this evening to all those agencies that came to assist our sheriff and Craven County Sheriff's Office on Friday night. I've talked with Sheriff Hughes, who is in attendance this evening multiple times throughout this past weekend. I commend him and all of his office for being by the side of Officer Bellingham for all weekend. If the sheriff was not there, one of our officers has been there stationed at Vedant Hospital. Our prayers tonight as a Board of Commissioners and I know as a county are extended to Deputy Bellingham and all of the Craven County Sheriff's Office. Tonight, we are honored to have with us Sheriff Hughes, and I'm going to ask him if he would come forward at this time as he, I know, would like to make a few comments.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I really just want to echo everything you said there. That was really about exactly what I was going to bring up. It has been a very emotional time. For my people that are out there protecting the county, and we know that's what we do. However, this is, this is very tough. To see this young man that has taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution and the people of this county, is there checking on the well-being of an individual and is I cannot thank the county enough, our county manager, who has talked with me numerous times every day, Chairman, you as well, and other Commissioners that have sent texts, and it has been checking on Deputy Bellingham. I also want to thank Stanley Kite and his office and our 911 dispatchers, um, who are on the other end of that phone when my lieutenant calls, when he's pinned down in a house, and that's the only lifeline he's got, and he's given us instruction as to where the assailant is in the house so we can better prepare ourselves to get him and others out of the house. And that must feel like a very helpless feeling to be on the other end of the phone and all you can do is just pass it along. So I want to thank our dispatchers for what they've done. I want to thank all of the agencies that came to us, federal, state, and local, that were there. We never had to ask for a thing. They were all, all there and willing to lay their lives on the line to get our people out of that house and to take this person into custody. And most importantly, I just ask that all of y'all keep Deputy Bellingham and his family and my deputies in your thoughts and prayers. There are some extensive injuries that Deputy Bellingham has, and it is going to be a long road to recovery, and I honestly think and truly believe that prayer is what's going to bring him through this. So I, I ask that y'all please, please continue to pray for him in my office. I'm so proud of all of my deputies and everybody in this community, the overwhelming amount of support. I cannot, it's, it's humbling and it's heartfelt, but to see my deputy laying there in that bed is, it breaks my heart. And I just thank y'all for everything you do, but our county manager's been a rock star. He has been constantly on the phone with me because it has been something that neither one of us have had to go through and just the resources that are being made available to my people. I thank you.
We thank you, Sheriff. Mr. County Manager, I, I think it would be appropriate on behalf of this Board of Commissioners, if this board would agree that at our next meeting, that a resolution could be prepared, that we could adopt to show our appreciation to all those that helped last Friday night and that it be sent to all those law enforcement officers, to our fire and rescue departments across the county, and also to county staff. Is there any objection for that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Sheriff. First item this evening, Commissioners, is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone that's signed up?
We do not.
All right. As we always do, do we have any citizens that are present that would desire to speak to the board on agenda topics? Here, none. We will move to item two, which will be a public hearing on economic development issues. I'm going to ask at this time, Mr. Jeff Wood would come forward and make a presentation, and then we would take the motion to go into public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. This public hearing is for Project Indoor. Project Indoor is a local manufacturer, Carolina GSC, who plans to invest $2.5 million in real estate, machining, and equipment in this existing facility and create over 15 jobs in five years. To assist in this investment, the North Carolina Department of Commerce has provided a grant of $200,000, $120,000 under the Rural Infrastructure Authority, Rural Economic Development Division. This grant will be awarded to and administered by the Craven County Economic Development Department.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard-
Make a motion to go into pu- uh, public hearings.
Second. I have a motion and a second to go into public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now are in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone to sign up?
We do not.
All right. Do we have any citizens that desire to speak on this matter?
Make a motion to go into public hearing?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we're right back to the board. Thank you, Jeff. Item four is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have there on the consent agenda the minutes of the September 20th regular session and also the September, yes, yes.
Number three.
Number three.
I'm sorry. I'm running ahead, isn't I? Mr. Chip, you come all the way this, this far to have a public hearing. We're going to give you that opportunity. Mr. Chip Bartlett, thank you for being here this evening, sir.
Thank you for having me, as always. Yes, tonight we're here to conduct a second public hearing and receive public comments regarding the county's intent to apply for Community Development Block Grant Funds. Purpose of this public hearing is to attain citizen views and, excuse me, answer any questions posed by citizens regarding the application. Craven County is eligible to apply for up to $750,000 of CDBG NR funds. These would be to serve households with incomes at below 80% of Craven County's median income. At this point, we've reviewed all the homeowner applications that were submitted and, as well as the onsite housing assessments. Based on those results, Craven County proposes to perform housing-related activities on four properties. Those properties are 8,000 River Road in Vanceboro, which would be a clearance and reconstruction; 526 Hyman Road in New Bern, also clearance and reconstruction; 334 Godette School Road in Havelock, clearance and reconstruction; and the fourth unit, 765 Up Creek Road in Cove City, would be a clearance and reconstruction. The proposed budget for the county's application, again, would be a total of $750,000, the breakdown being $675,000 in rehab and program administration at $75,000. Again, for a total of $750,000, that application is proposed to be submitted to the state by October 14th, 2021. I'll be glad to answer any questions during the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in public hearing. The vice chair has indicated that no one has signed up, anyone in the audience desiring to speak to the board.
Make a motion to go out of the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now back to the board. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
All right, now the consent agenda. You heard, we have there the minutes of the September 20th regular session, September 20th reconvened session. You also have the tax releases and refunds, and then you have a donation for recreation for the BRIC fundraiser. Are there any items that you desire to pull from the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Departmental matters, item five, the Health Department for Budget Amendment. Ms. Scott Harrison, good evening, sir. Also this evening, Scott, if you will, after we approve this budget amendment, or consider it at least, if you will, give us an update, if you will, on COVID.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your consideration of this budget amendment for $140,500. Customarily, this time of year, we bring forward, if we have a, a good financial fiscal year, the year before, we have a purchase list that we put together, and this year totals 140,500, and it's a lineage of items from across the department, from Animal Control, Environmental Health, our dental program, and some of the larger ticket items, as you have seen, is facility issues, flooring for upstairs, painting the building. A new one, addition to the outside is a covered bus stop. We have a carts, carts is frequents our establishment, dropping people off for their appointments, and then also more on the facility is pressure washing the buildings. So these are things that have been submitted by our staff, a lot of equipment replaced, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about our list.
All right, any questions for Mr. Harrison?
Make a motion to approve.
Hold on, if you will, Commissioner Liner.
Are you using your funding to make a cart bus stop? Doesn't carts have funding for? I thought we, we approved their big budget. It was part of that for this new location, is that they had funding for?
It wasn't for this bus stop, sir. It was an initial one, and I'm, Mr. Jean's in the room. I don't know. It was at another location, Jean, if I'm not mistaken.
In that, in that large budget that they've got, it is for signage, it's for signs and bus stop signs and informational signs, the actual structure of a bus stop is not in any of those monies for that cart program. The city is providing through some of their grants in the, in the greater downtown area, they're providing for stop locations. Challenges is the maintenance of them on not county-owned property, where this will be on county-owned property.
All right, thank you.
All right, additional questions? I just would like to state for the record that in your agenda packets, there was just a slight clerical error. You have received there on your desk a correct budget amendment, so it did not change the bottom figure, but it was just some clerical issues there as far as when it was typed in. All right, any other questions? Here, none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And Scott, if you will, give us an update, if you will.
Yes, sir. The COVID situation and the state, the numbers are beginning to fall. It looks like the second week in September appears to be the peak. I think September 7th was our highest day of cases in Craven County, and it, the cases fortunately appear to be dropping just as fast as they increased, which is sort of the Epi curve that we were anticipating, and the state epidemiologists, if you dare to make projections with COVID, are saying that it should be much lower by the end of this month. So at one point, we were over 100 cases per 100,000 a day, per 100,000 population, that is, and today we were at 50. We also have, I think, covered the basis fairly well as far as testing. Today at the Health Department, we only had 10 people coming for the testing, so we're seeing that demand decrease a bit as well. At one point, with the school system and trying to get everybody back in school as quickly as we could, there was a lot of testing going on. There's also good coverage for the booster doses for the Pfizer that's available. Private offices are giving them, we're giving them. We actually have a law, our first day back at the convention center scheduled for October 6th, but right now we have less than 200 people scheduled to be there. Anything over 100 people really maxes out our space at the Health Department. It's kind of tight. We did do a lot of Moderna vaccine, and we feel like that will be the bulk of what we see because we did so many Moderna through the Health Department, and those are not approved yet, but in the weeks to come, we do feel like the Moderna booster will be approved, and it will be a half dose.
All right, any questions? Commissioner Mitchell, did you want to go? Okay, Commissioner Smith?
October 6th, will this be Pfizer?
That will be Pfizer, yes, ma'am.
The number of cases that you're currently having, what is the percentage of fatalities on these cases? You said the cases are dropping, but how are we rating as far as saving lives now?
Good question. The, the overall death rate for COVID is less than 1%, and we have seen a difference. The death rate for this second wave is about a fourth of what it was during the first wave, and that, that can be attributed to higher vaccination rates. The vaccination really covered the 50 and older group in Craven County. The 65 and older are over 90% covered, and 96% of the deaths occurred in 50 and older during the first wave.
All right, additional questions from the-
Scott, isn't it also true that the, uh, the health community is better prepared to treat the patients today than they were a year ago? They've learned a lot about how to do the treatment, and they have more tools at their disposal, and I suspect that's also reducing that death rate.
Yes, sir. The monoclonal antibody infusions for people when they are, are diagnosed with having COVID are available in three different locations in the county. Now, there's another peel method that's going to be coming out on the market as well that sees some good results, and the fact that a lot of your brittle populations succumb COVID during the first wave.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think, I think that the independent doctors getting, being able to give shots has helped too.
Yes, sir. And I can't forget the local pharmacies as well.
Yep.
They're also giving them.
All right, thank you, Scott. We appreciate that update.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is Economic Development Matters, Mr. Jeff Wood.
Mr. Wood, again. First on, first topic is the budget amendment for Project Indoor. I'll try to do this a little better than I did during the public hearing. This is, of course, Carolina GSC. They're a fantastic company. They have been in the, the industrial parks since 2018. They purchased the Shell Building that the Craven 100 Alliance built on Craven County property that was sold to them. They're expanding it, doubling their size in square footage, another 20,000 square feet. Corporate headquarters is in Greenville, a real true testament to Craven County. Last time I talked to their, their president, CEO, John Werner, he was going to a trade show of sorts, and he showed me, or talked about his presentation, and it was his Craven County story. And so not only are we helping a company with their investment of $2.5 million, the 15 jobs, which is actually an additional 22 jobs, but seven of them did not count for this specific grant, so they're act, actually up to about 30 employees in two years. They're also a cheerleader for Craven County now, so extremely excited to help them with this. Prior to the meeting, I also provided a resolution, Department of Commerce, to accept this grant. Requires a resolution, and it was a template resolution saying that we would accept the grant funding. So with that, any questions? If you wanted to have any-
Any questions concerning any of these items, but first, we want to deal with the resolution.
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
Second. I have a motion and accept the resolution of the Craven County Board of Commissioners approving the economic development agreement. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right.
Then would the budget amendment need a vote as well?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. The request is for a budget amendment in the amount of $120,000.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chair, uh, yeah, Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right.
Second topic is Naval Ex Tech Bridge, exciting topic that I think I've briefed you guys on a few months ago. I'd like to introduce two guests that I have in the room today, and I'm going to look at their titles because they're so doggone long. Stephen Barrow from FRC East, he is the Director of Maintenance, Repair, Overhaul, MRR Logistics. And then Keith Wheeler from East Carolina University, he is the Executive Director of the Office of National Security and Industry Initiative's Division of Research, Economic Development, and Engagement. These two gentlemen have been integral in taking this from an idea, which I would love to have stolen, but actually it was Keith's, and, and making it very much something that's real and tangible, which would like to thank Stephen for, for helping that along for sure. If, if I, by chance, I'd like to have them be a part of the presentation and make a few comments. Again, Naval Ex Tech Bridge, from a novice, is an entity to be created between the federal government DOD, particularly Department of Navy in this instance, and a local government to facilitate relationships between the government, academia, and the private sector to move forward on the development of intellectual property and commercialization of technologies to assist the military in its mission. This was something that the Navy created, understanding that our, our adversaries at times move a little faster in moving along technology than we have, and this is one of the ways that they've figured out how to do it. These things exist, about a dozen of them around the country, and fortunately, we have an opportunity here tonight to start the stages to create our very own group. The long-term goal would be to create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that will hold this entity in place within Craven County. Until that is possible, which will take a few months to flesh out from its governing board to its strategic vision, tonight we're asking that the county go into a memorandum of understanding with FRC East, if I remember correctly, is the other side of the entity, in what they call a PIA, which is a partnership intermediary agreement, which would be an MOU for us, so that the county would act as an intermediary group until that 501(c)(3) would be established. The reason we would want to do this is there's a lot of momentum, there was a lot of energy, and Jack can speak to this, some of the meetings we've been in, not only from the leadership, the CEO of FRC East, but also Colonel Huber from Cherry Point, and Colonel Todd Ferry from MCI East. This is something that I think has an opportunity for us to be able to move forward as we see changes on, on base, which Stephen can speak to better than I ever could, but this will allow us to be able to move forward in parallel to creating that entity. The main thing that we would be looking at is establishing those relationships between the three entities that I spoke of before, which the Economic Development Office has experience in. For instance, we have, as known as the Industry Council, which is a, a standing council that we bring in several times a year that includes all of our major employers and some of our smaller ones, talk about what our manufacturing needs are going to be. So we have that, that experience in keeping and maintaining groups that we can leverage to capacity building, looking for things like grants, economic development grants that could be used to help stand up the entity and give it some leverage or some legs while it sets itself up to be sustained. And so I would like, this evening, for the board to accept the, or allow the county administrator to enter into this memorandum of understanding once it's been completed.
All right, did Stephen?
And Keith, you want to come up and say a few words? Sorry. Chair.
Nope, that's one I won't.
To start off, since Stephen's the real horsepower, thanks, everybody, for having us tonight. Just a few words to show our support from ECU to Fleet Readiness Center East. We understand the economic engine that it is, its importance to the region, and back during the pandemic, I think it was, we started discussing some ideas about increasing and formalizing our partnerships with, with such an entity, and it's, it's important to ECU, it's important for our faculty and our students. The handful of folks that I've started briefing because we weren't sure how soon it was going to be announced are very excited at the opportunities that could be, that could come out of something like this. So thanks to Stephen, he's been, like I said, the real horsepower and the owner of the, the idea, and it'll be the first one in North Carolina and one of, what, 14, 15 or so across the country. It's just amazing what FRC East is doing, not just for the Navy, Marine Corps, but across DOD and the, in the aerospace MRO sector, so hats off to you guys.
Yes, I'll echo what both Jeff and Keith said. I mean, I think the, the opportunity from the perspective of what it actually brings to the area is profound. The other tech bridges, a, a number of them have had a rather large level of success with solving difficult problems for the naval enterprise, and that's really the purpose of it. So solving difficult problems, up and advanced the mission, helping the warfighter, being able to achieve what they need to achieve faster than we have historically. And so being able to bridge that gap with local industry, with government, so on and so forth, provide opportunities to have interaction with government at a federal level that folks typically don't have that opportunity for, right? Especially companies that may be small business, so on and so forth. We all know that defense acquisition is hard either way you look at it, but this also facilitates some, some acquisitions that are a lot more flexible than your standard federal acquisition regulations, so there's some non-far-based acquisitions that fall into this as well. That would help some of the small businesses attract some things economically to the area and so on and so forth. economically to the area and so on and so forth. As far as how this would be modeled off of, it maps to the Office of Naval Research and it is modeled off of the same sort of entity that the Special Operations Command has in Tampa, Florida. If you do some research on that, you'll find out that they have been highly successful with local industry and some of the other tech bridges, such as Central Florida and the epicenter that they've created around them in the community.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jeff or Mr. Barrow or Mr. Wheeler? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do. Could you tell us some of the other 14 or 15 tech bridges that are already existent, in existence and running in the United States? You mentioned Central Florida.
Yes, so Central Florida would be one. The Southern Maryland would be another. There's one in DC as well. There's actually a number surrounding that, Northern Virginia area. We have one in Charleston, South Carolina, as well. There's one in San Diego. Port Hounini. There's actually one in London as well. So I don't have the entire list with me. I apologize.
I know you enough with those areas that, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, additional questions? All right. Here, no additional questions. We've been asked to authorize the county manager to enter into an MOU with FRC. Do we have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Commissioner? Commissioner Lerner?
I may take some time here for a minute.
Yes, sir.
Trying to digest this and everything through it, given the authority to do it. This is a great opportunity for the county, great opportunity for this area to be partnered with them and move it forward. It's something that's probably not going to happen overnight. It's probably not going to happen in the next 18 months, but it's going to be moving it and getting it in a position and everything else. And I think the board needs to be aware of what this could entail for this community. And if the board were to go along with me, I think we need to have a representative from this board as a liaison to feed this board back on what is going on and keeping us aware of what's happening and what we need to do as an elected body to make sure this moves itself forward and doesn't drag along. And based on that, I'd like to put Commissioner ET Mitchell in nomination to fill that liaison position, to keep us abreast and work with Jeff in going along if the board so desires.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Mitchell would be our liaison, working conjunction with Jeff on this project. Is any discussion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. I agree. I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Lerner. Commissioner Mitchell serves on North Carolina Military Affairs Committee, also on ACT, and I think she can be a valuable resource for us. So we thank you, gentlemen, for being here, for what you're doing. We look forward to working with you and thank you. All right.
Third.
Yes, sir.
Third one. Industrial Park mowing budget amendment. This is the consequences of doing so well in the industrial park of being able to have a popular product. As we've moved along on Lot 19, last time I was here, we went under contract for another six acres. What has happened is that that has caused us to start to move into Lot 19 to where we have some tree overgrowth. And we're in a situation where for it to be something that would be valuable, marketable, we're going to push that back. And so in conjunction of trying to push that back, I asked for a quote, not only to clean that area up, now that we're kind of in a law between the Phase Two of the water extension, water and sewer extension, and Phase Three, which will be happening pretty soon too, I'd like to get that brush pushed back, go ahead and cut the grass, and then also to advance our property on the northern side of the park, northern part of the park, Lot 9 as well, and go ahead and cut that and have that look suitable for sale. And I think if you guys have visited out there here recently, you might have noticed, at least I have, and I know Jack has, that the trees are starting to invade on my grass. So with your permission, I did get three quotes. This was the cheapest quote that we had, $19,576. Majority of that is because of the trees.
All right, are there any questions?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $19,576 for the mowing and tree removal. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, next is planning the adoption of the resolution for application for the CDBG, actually in our funding, Mr. Don Rumgarda. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. Well, as you heard earlier during the public hearing, Chip Bartlett did explain that we were looking to apply for up to $750,000 of the Community Development Block Grant Revitalization Program. We were looking to serve households with incomes below 80% of the Craven County median income for the appropriate household size. And the proposed budget, as he reviewed, was for $675,000 for the rehabilitation of four structures. The total project budget would be $750,000. And in order for us to move forward, we are requesting the board adopt the resolution of application for CDBG in our funding.
All right, any questions for Mr. Rumgarda?
Yeah. Where does the state stand on this? Going back to the 11 houses that we have to raise for regular people, which they want a 5% on the total for us, where do we stand in getting this through?
This particular grant funding is handled by a different arm of the state, other than the hazard mitigation funds, which are dealing with storm recovery. This is just the normal program development for Community Development Block Grant Funds. And the entire funding for this program is covered within the $750,000. There's actually $75,000 available for the administration of the program. Sometimes we utilize the entire amount, sometimes we don't utilize the entire amount. It depends on when we get involved in it, how much time literally it takes to administer the program.
All right, additional questions? Commissioner Smith?
Am I hearing you say that of this $750,000, we don't have to put up any funds?
That is correct. And this is 100% grant, as long as the households are 80% below the median income.
What is the median income?
For, you know, two-member household, you're looking at about $34,000 a year. And as you increase the number of household folks, then you're looking at increasing that substantially.
Thank you.
Other questions? Here, none. Do I have a motion that we?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for the application. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
We have one note. Commissioner Mark?
Commissioner Mark, one more thing that I will let you know that we have heard recently that the state might be considering trying to grant at least an additional 5% to do contract management on the hazard mitigation programs. But we do not know if that's a reality. We are hearing rumblings that that is something that is kind of being considered at this time. I think they're determining, because this is a new program, I think they're determining that it's going to take some money to do construction management, not just all the paperwork and processing the applications, but it's actually going to take someone to manage those programs.
Yeah, well, my concern is we have 11 houses that are almost two and a half years since Florence, and we have some people since before Florence from, what was the hurricane before that? Matthew. That are living in hotels. And in the meantime, we're taking this in. It's good to hear that, but that's my objection.
All of our, we've actually had three proposals for hazard mitigation that we've been told that they're going to approve. However, we've not seen one contract yet for any of them. And we understand there is a fourth one at this time that's under consideration by FEMA, but again, we do not have any official word on that one as well. So this is a new process that the state is endeavoring on to administer these programs more in-house at the state, rather than, you know, basically the county administering the program.
Well, I thank you for that information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Don. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is information technology. We have a budget amendment for fiber audit. Mr. Steve Bennett?
Good evening, sir. Good evening, sir. Craven County is currently working on a countywide water system telemetry and SCADA system update project. The system that allows water tanks, pumps, and wells to communicate back to the water plant and ensure that the water system is operating appropriately. The original communication system made use of telephone lines, which were damaged during Hurricane Florence. The county's project will extend our existing fiber optic infrastructure by adding an additional 25 miles of fiber optic cable to connect these water assets that are unable to communicate. As we've been working with our engineering firm on this project, the county realized that there is not a comprehensive record of all of our fiber assets. As a reminder, we are a member of a fiber optic co-op that includes the city of New Bern, city of Havlock, Craven County Schools, and Craven County Community College. Over the years, as utilization has grown, a centralized record and documentation of the system's design and capacity was not developed. This has led to some design issues with the telemetry project. In order to keep the project on project on schedule, an audit of the fiber optic infrastructure is recommended by staff. I've contacted the firm that originally designed and built the majority of the current network to conduct a comprehensive audit. This audit will verify locations, capacity, and endpoint connections for all existing fiber optic cable. Additionally, fiber optic asset management software is recommended to maintain the fiber optic records going forward. The cost of the audit is $37,000 and the cost of the software is $22,000 for the first year with a reoccurring annual cost of $17,000. We're recommending that we do a budget amendment in the amount of $59,000 to cover the expenditure for this fiscal year.
All right, questions from the board? Commissioner Lerner?
Yes, this is you, Steve, and the manager. Once this audit is done, will we know who's in our system?
Yes, sir. We'll know to the best of our ability. We'll know where the cable goes to whose doorstep.
What I'm getting at. You all know that we've got more, a lot of our lines are full. They're already maxed out. It's not our doing, it's other people getting in there. I mean, we had a good system before because we had a gentleman's agreement reached with old people. So what are we going to do when we find out that others have got more than they're allocated or more that? We put the system in, we put the lines in, we put the pipes in and everything else. How are we going to handle having others using our capabilities?
So I think this audit allows us to have that conversation with the group, the consortium that Steve mentioned earlier. It's one of those, we need to get together. We got to have this before we can have the conversation, see where our deficiencies are. There's probably places we're really good, Steve.
Yes, sir.
There's going to be places, as you mentioned, Commissioner Lerner, we're really bad. And it's not going to be all the entities the same in each instance. I mean, maybe, well, we're not even needing some, but it may be another entity has a shortfall. So it brings us back to the table to try to build that group back together. So how do we solve that problem where someone may be using more fiber than we thought they were? We're just going to have to talk it through and see where we get.
Well, how are we going to stop it in the future if we've got, we know we got spaces? How are we going to control accessibility in taking our lines?
I think the key to that is continuing to audit. So not necessarily every year, but maybe once every year, two or three. The other part is redesigning the network so that instead of running all the cable in a leg directly to a building, we do what the cable company does and we'll run it down the street. We get to your building, there'll be a handhold, and then from, you know, from the handhold to your building is just what you need. So.
I mean, you pay for that tap-in.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
This is a follow-up to Commissioner Lerner's, and I have the same concern after we spent $37,000 doing this audit. I don't think it makes sense that two years down the road or five years down the road that we spend another $37,000 to make sure that somebody has not crossed out of their lane, if you will. Is there a way on an ongoing basis that we can track who's using our fiber? So that in March, we discover somebody's using our fiber, perhaps inadvertently they didn't realize, and we can say, oops, stop, not supposed to go there.
Unfortunately, it's not like water or electricity where we can see a diminish. It's going to be, you know, when we go to plan something out, which is the reason the software is so important. You know, we can go back and we go to maybe tap in and we open up a handhold and we see like, oh, this is supposed to be free and it's not. All right, where does this go? Then we can have proactive tool, or we can have reactive tools to go in and start looking. But unfortunately, with the technology, there's not something feasible for us at this time.
Commissioner Smith? Yes.
I'm all of the above what I'm able to think with the technology. However, with technology continuously growing, wouldn't we expect to go back and have to redo and invest for, in fact, someone had mentioned five years and somebody's tapped in. With technology continuously growing, what is the expectation from this monies that we are putting in right now?
Well.
Are we expecting to put the money in to stop other people from tapping in? Are we expecting to continue to grow Craven County?
We're expecting to continue to grow. The system has been in place as is for the better part of 15 years. We've added certain legs to bring on more schools. We've added legs to bring in and service areas with broadband, such as MCN and the industrial park.
But that being said, to me, I know that it's a little worrisome, but seems to me if we're continually improving, it's to our advantage for people tapping in. Of course, now I don't understand, as I said before, I don't understand the system. Of course, now, I don't understand, as I said before, I don't understand the system.
I think the, what we, you need to understand though is that the only ones that can tap in is our co-op. Our co-op is, as addressed in the agenda packet, it's, it's the governmental bodies for Havelock, Newbern, Craven County. It's also the community college and the Craven County school system. So there's five of us in this co-op.
Right. So if one tends to need more technol, more than the other.
Right.
What, I, I don't.
It may help a little bit, Steve, and one of the things that we could talk about is, so when this network, and it was almost 20 years that this has been in the ground, you said 15, but it's been almost 20 years. It wasn't that the county went out and invested and built the whole system. We did build a large portion of it and we connected the dots, but there was existing fiber owned by the city of Newbern, existing fiber owned by the city of Havelock that was patched together by the county. So over time, E-rate money from the schools was able to extend those lines out, which benefited multiple partners depending on which way you went. That was the schools portion, that sort of shared money. We would upsize some of those pipes. I think about one under the Neush River going to Bridgeton Elementary. We put a strand in there for ourselves and then the schools put their strand in. So it's kind of a hodgepodge, and I think what Commissioner Liner was getting at when this thing was built and everybody got to the table, we all worked really well. Last time, the, the pieces have changed in the consortium and there's really no one that was here 20 years ago anymore.
Correct.
There is no one. So everybody's kind of had to learn and some of that gets lost as you switch those pieces out of people. And where we may have had an agreement to say this 12 strands in Havelock was something we would use for the county, it doesn't mean another partner didn't go in and say, oh, we need those 12 strands, and they didn't know that agreement existed. So I think this audit establishes a place and time, what's there now, but also helps Steve develop procedures and protocols for moving forward saying, well, that fiber was free six months ago and that was some that was dedicated for this. Is that what you were getting at, Steve?
Yes, sir.
I may be interpreting comments by commissioners differently, and if I am, you please tell me, but I'm interpreting you to say that, do we need an MOU going forward after this is done to sit back down at the table with the, this co-op and say, we need something in writing? Is that?
This, this has to happen for that conversation to go, we've got to know what's there and what's in place and then try to push this thing.
Well, I think that's the, sort of the desire, if I'm not hearing no objection, is after we do this piece, if we can, to.
Yes, sir.
Do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
All right. Any other questions? All right, here, none. Do I have a motion?
No moves.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in amount of $59,000. Here are no discussion, further discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McCabe?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it, buddy. Commissioners, next, we have appointments. You have their, the pending appointments. Do I have any nominations from the floor from any commissioners for any pending? I do have one that we have deferred for several meetings now. It is for the Craven County Planning Board. It would represent District Two. And we have an application there on your desk for Mr. William Farmer. And I would ask that if the board would consider him to serve.
Second.
All right, I have that nomination. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here are none. Mr. Farmer will be accepted by acclamation. Are there any additional? All right, here are none. We will go to current. You have there for the jury commissioner, Mr. Timothy Mason, who seeks reappointment and is eligible.
Mr. Chairman, I would appoint, make a motion to appoint Timothy J. Mason.
Second. We have a motion, a nomination rather, for Timothy Mason. Are there additional nominations? Here are none. He will be accepted by acclamation. All right, you have there commissioners, the upcoming terms expiring for the fall of 2021. J.C.C. Board, the Fire Tax Commissioners Board, Craven County Board of Adjustments. Any other appointments this evening? Here are none. We will go to county attorney's report. Mr. Eric Gray.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no report.
Sorry.
All right.
What a disappointment.
Next on the agenda is the petition of citizens for general topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
We have none.
We have no citizens signed up. Any citizens desiring to speak to the board? Here are none. We will move to the next item, which will be the county manager's report. Mr. Vice.
Ms. Chairman, wanted to remind the board, next meeting, October 18th, we will have our second, our second half redistricting work session. As you remember from the last meeting, we, we did the sort of general statute part, setting the rules, parameters for our consultants, and next time they'll be coming back with maps. I have spent some time with individual commissioners since that meeting discussing, spent a lot of time with Commissioner Smith. Last Friday, we had a good tour, able to look at most of her district. And I've talked with other commissioners since the last meeting. So I feel good. I've got time scheduled with one more commissioner on Thursday to look at Commissioner McCabe's district with him. And then we should be, after that, talking to the consultants about trying to get toward the final maps. We will put, post those maps once you receive them in October in a public place, because as you remember, you'll have to have a public hearing on November the 5th, I believe. And that public hearing will be the public's opportunity to talk about if there's one, two, three, ever, how many maps are, which one they prefer. Last time, we posted them on our website. We posted them downstairs in our lobby. And Mr. Jean, was there, I felt like there was a couple of other places we posted them to. We'll go back and look, but we want to make sure we spread them around the county. We may put some out in the west and in the east to make sure everybody has an opportunity to take a look at them.
Mr. Manager, could we not put them in the libraries?
We could. Yeah, that's fine. That's a great idea. Well, that, okay. We'll just coordinate with Clowers on that. Also, if the board would indulge us, I spoke with Mr. Hodges last week. We've been trying to track some of the capital projects that are, you know, been, been kind of hanging around. It would be if the board can indulge us on that same meeting, Jean could give you a building and facilities update from the last time would have been at budget for where we are. Jean, I'm going to butcher it, I know, but where we would be on our gas station project, our gas pumps, where we'd be on the courthouse project across the street, where we'd be on the new carts building. Was there anything else?
Pharmacy.
An update on the pharmacy. So it'd be those four, if the board would like that.
All right. Do we hear any objection from the board that we include additional work session items on the 18th? Okay, here are no objection. Jack, how long do you think that would probably take?
You know, I, I'm just concerned because the redistricting, I think, is going to take more time this meeting than last meeting, so I would just plan on afternoon.
So you would say marking off the whole day?
I would, if the commissioners can do that. I would just do 8:30 to, to 4:30 or something like that.
Commissioner McCabe, county manager desires to discuss additional work session items at our next meeting on the 18th. So we would have an all-day meeting.
Facilities mainly. Jean's just going to give you an update. No real final decisions, Jean, just basically you need to check down, I think, on everything for the most. I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, we should put you on there, Jean. I'll give you some of my time.
I just think we like, but the idea is to get a check down and kind of head nods, this is the way we want to proceed. And ultimately, if the board's in agreement that we move forward, the next items would be contract approvals, approving bids, et cetera. It's mainly saying, you're on the path we expect, go ahead and start getting bids together. That would be the plan.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just take a minute, moment of privilege here. 10 years ago tonight, if you were watching the recording of that meeting, you would hear my knees knocking up here because it was my very first county commissioner meeting as a county manager in years. Goes by quick. I did some quick math over there. It's a whole lot more than this, but these are just the regularly scheduled 240 county commissioner meetings that have been in between. And I've enjoyed every single one of them and it's, you know, it's a great county. We were talking earlier, Ms. Chairman, in your remarks, and I know they weren't, weren't something we want to say, but we are a family in Craven County and I've always felt that way with not just the board and the staff, the citizens. I tell folks all the time, you know, I get the question, you know, what do you do? What's your day like? And it's hard to answer sometimes because it's, it's different every day. But I like to think that what county government's about, or really any local government, I'll, I'll throw our city friends in too, we're here to help people. And 10 years ago, that's what I wanted to do and standing here tonight, that's what I still want to do. And I, I feel honored to be selected for this position. It's really one of the more meaningful things in my life to be able to serve Craven County. I, I won't name every commissioner, but I've enjoyed working with every single one over that 10 years. I've been here 11 and a half years, but 10 years as county manager. But I want to say a special word to the Craven County staff. You know, being, being the county manager, you, you don't get to be there every day with them, you don't get to talk to them every day, you don't get to see them every day. But I know each and every one of them's working for the citizens of Craven County as hard as they can. I've seen it during Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Florence, COVID, tornadoes, ice storms, whatever it is, we always band together. We have the most fabulous group of employees of any county in the United States. And I stand here and I don't have any problem saying that, and I tell them that every chance I can. I'm so proud of each and every one of them, the ones that have been here 50 years and the ones that were here five minutes. I think the world of each of them, they're all here for the right reasons. So with that, commissioners, I thank you for the opportunity to serve and I look forward to many more years with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. We appreciate your service to the citizens of this county and, and your assistance to us as a board of commissioners. We appreciate that. All right, next.
Chairman, if I could add?
Please.
Being, I'm not the oldest guy on the board, but I'm close.
Not even close.
Just saying nothing. Okay, wise guy.
Not even close to Tom.
Having spent my career in a lot of different positions and a lot of different org, not same company, but a lot of different organizations, I agree with, with what the, what the managers just said about the dedication and the skill and the just stepping up whenever and whatever needs to be done of the employees of this county. But never let it, everybody needs to know, and I think we all know this, everything emanates from the top. And whatever the leadership at the top of the, of the heap, however he leads or she leads, is how the group is going to function. And so, Jack, it's your leadership that causes this county to function the way it does. So my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As being on the board a few years, I can remember an assistant manager that we went into the field quite often and had a lot to do with training me, and I thank him for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Next, we have commissioners' report. Commissioner Mark, we'll start with you this evening.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, I just have two things to report. Tomorrow night, you'll know that we have a national night out at the Harlow Community Center at 6:00. It was supposed to be 6 to 9, but since it getting dark faster and the kids have to go to school, so they changed from 6 to 8. So we have the Sheriff Department along with the Fire Department, fool, DJ, some of those stuff will be there. So also, last September 12th, Carrot on the East helps in the deer rundown, the Cobra Team, Vatty Shots at the Harlow Community Center on a Sunday at 1:00. And we have it again on October the 17th from 3 to 6. And they give it up free, it's free for A-12 and older, low appointment, that's needed. One and two and three, Pfizer, you've got Moderna, Pfizer Booster, and the J&amp;J, one and done. So that's what it says here. If they don't want, they need the shots, please come down to the Harlow Community Center in Harlow from 3 to 6 and get your shots if you need them. If you do need them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing to report, sir.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes, sir. Two things. Jack earned his money last week. I think I drove him crazy.
No comment.
We had a Trillium meeting last Tuesday. You had a brief in here from DSS and myself telling you what this Medicaid transformation was going to be like, and it's starting. It's already started. Trillium, discount, Trillium's catch patient is 27 counties. We're going to take a cut of $504 million from the state that they normally get from Trillium. That is a go, that is a set. That's a new formula was set. And surprisingly enough, we're still working it, trying to find out, but it only affects In addition to that, something separate, not tied to the funding, but Trillium has lost the two hospice houses that we had set up. We have no hospice houses.
Respite.
Respite, respite, hospice houses in the area. They're working, they're trying to figure out how to do it, but those are gone now. One was in Greenville, one was?
Wilson.
Wilson, yeah. So those are gone. I mean, it's, and July 1st started the standard plan of Medicaid, and the people just don't know it. They've gotten their letters, they didn't understand it, they didn't apply for it. I mean, it's turning into a real debacle and everything else. But our biggest point is, they're going to have to cut some services. What used to be, they're leaving the kids alone, kids are getting 24 visits to go to a psychiatrist or needing help, that. They're still keeping those at 24 visits a year. Used to be for adults. They've cut those in half, they're only going to be 12, and they're going to have to be approved prior to going, along with some other steps in that to try to reach. And they're not sure that they're going to be, everything they've cut so far is going to be enough to cover the 504 million that they've lost from the state. We're trying to get more information. We got Steve involved with it, Representative Tyson, and we've backed off of him because we don't have all of the information directly, what he needs, but we're trying to figure out how this is going to work. But it's going to be a hardship. It's going to be a hardship for us here, because you're going to get calls for all those that's on Medicaid and has been using that function. Jeff is going to be seeing it. We've had meetings with Jeff and Jack and myself, trying to figure out how we're going to work through this, and it's, it's a big issue. Next one, Chairman, I think you need to help me with this. I think we all have our invitation for Wednesday for the airport brief. That's still going at 1:30?
Yes, right, I'm going to send it. Yeah, 1:30.
So we have, we have that for Wednesday. You can attend or come online or check on that, and I think that's it, sir.
Commissioner Liner, if, if we may ask this, you talked about the 500-some million dollars that's going to be cut to Trillium. Are the other agencies across the state, are they also receiving cuts also?
No, only affects Trillium.
Only affects Trillium. Why has Trillium been?
The way it's been explained, and Jack's going to have to jump in here, that they changed the formula when Florence came through. So they didn't actually use the formula at Florence because everything was all messed up. The second year, they used the formula and they gave us a little bit more money to spend on the formula. Well, we spent this past year, this past budget, Trillium spent all of their money, every bit of their money. So the state, everybody else did not save it and they banked it. So the state says, well, you spent all of your money, plus your clientele charges are higher than anybody else, not taking into consideration that the eastern part of the state is rural. So we don't have the access to mental health. We don't have access to the providers. So we've got to, they didn't, they didn't, I don't believe they used the formula tied to the rural section. They used it for the municipalities in the big metropolitan areas and everything else. Because they say we were, we were the highest per cost individual. And formally worked it out that way. And that's what we're trying to still, we're, we're still trying to wrap ourselves around this. I've got the chairman of the Trillium Board trying to get me information and how we can process this through, but it only affects Trillium. And if you recall, seven, eight years ago? No, not that long, probably four years ago, they came back and says, if you don't spend your money, we're going to take it away from you. So they were going to penalize us, penalize us four years ago because we weren't spending it all. Now we have spent it all, and it seems like they're penalizing us because we did spend it.
Trillium covers 20?
27 catch.
27. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Commissioner Liner?
Mr. Liner, Commissioner Liner, that would take away from DIX then, DIX Crisis Center.
Right now, no.
No.
No, right now, no. That funding and everything else is.
It wasn't.
It's more the.
It was foster, the two respite homes for foster children, the disabled visits and, Commissioner Liner, I'm sorry, the other two I'm blanking on. But it was not.
The disabled side, no, no, not the substance abuse.
And the DIX Center is mainly funded through contributions from outside along with Medicaid reimbursement. So there's some.
But there is some Trillium in there.
Commissioner Liner did a great job. I'm not sure I could have done any better. It, it is extremely complicated. It's the division of mental health formula. And I think, as he said, there's, you know, I tried to articulate, I don't know if I did a good job last week, but, you know, one, one instance, you're saying, spend all your money, because if you have any, we're going to take it.
because if you have any, we're gonna take it. Now, if you spend it all, we're gonna penalize you on the formula. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two to be in.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Liner. Commissioner Smith?
As the, one of the oldest and newest members of this body, I would like to say just a, a word or two. Since you've been giving accolades to, uh, Mr. White, I would share mine as well. Since I've come aboard as a member of the county commissioners, he has given his time and energy to make sure that I understand every aspect of county government. And he has given me onsite visits. Every meeting, I have the opportunity to come in and go over anything that I need to know. He takes time, and if he's not in, he assigns Jean. So the two of them have just been so helpful to me in helping me to understand what I need to know to be an effective member of this board, and I do appreciate that. I think that you need to know that.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Vice Chair Booker?
I have nothing.
All right. The only thing that I would add under my comments is, uh, several years ago when we had Hurricane Florence came through, uh, Jack and Amber and, and, um, Jean and the team came up with the hashtag, uh, Craven Strong. And, um, I think, you know, I, that's kind of how I feel like about Craven County right now. You know, we've been through some, um, as I said, horrific event this past weekend, but, um, we will move forward, and I believe that we are once again craving strong. Um, I think you've all said it, there's no need to repeat it again, but, um, we, we have a, a wonderful team all the way across county government, but it's at times like this that we can show deeper appreciation, we, I think, and, and for what each person does. And, um, our law enforcement, there's no value to what they provide to us, uh, to keep us all safe each and every day, and, and we're truly blessed. So we are craving strong, and we thank the Lord for that. Commissioners, anything else to bring before the board, before we go into closed session? Here...
What's to go in closed session?
Okay, I have a motion. Let me read it first. We have a, a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven A six for personnel matters. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second to go in closed session. Is any discussion? I would have one discussion is that we will take about a ten-minute break before we go into closed session to allow staff time to clear the room. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?